We'll call this work session Monday, September 12th to order. Invitation given by Mr. Kenner and pledge allegiance by Mr. Dahl.
Almighty God, we give you thanks and praise for your great goodness towards us. We ask you to be with the mayor and council this evening as they go about the public business, lead, guide, and direct them in all that they do. We give special thanks for those long-serving and recognized employees of the city and keep them safe from harm in all that they do. We ask your special grace to be amongst the families of those in the city who have recently passed away. These things we ask in Jesus Christ's name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First thing tonight is to present certificates of election and the second thing is employee service awards. We'll do both of these down front.
This is to advise you, City Council, City of Scottsboro, Alabama, as we are before declared that you are duly elected to the office of place number five of the Scottsboro City Council at the municipal election held in the form of City of Scottsboro on the 23rd day of August 2022. This is your official certificate of election. Congratulations. This is to advise you, City Council, City of Scottsboro, Alabama, as here before declared that you were duly elected to the office of place number two on the Scottsboro Board of Education at the municipal election held only for the City of Scottsboro on the 23rd day of August 2022. This is your official certificate of election to such office. Congratulations.
This is always a great part of something we love to do here. Chris Ronnie, would you come forward, please?
Thanks, sir.
And appreciation for your 10 years of dedicated service to the City of Scottsboro. Congratulations, sir.
I don't bore you.
How are you?
Fine.
Appreciate what you do, brother. Appreciate you, man.
This award is given to James Parry in appreciation for your 10 years of dedicated service to the City of Scottsboro. Congratulations. Mr. Bert Gross. This award is given to Bert Gross in appreciation for your 15 years of dedicated service to the City of Scottsboro. This award is given to Lisa Hapton in appreciation for your 20 years of dedicated service to the City of Scottsboro. Congratulations. Mr. Rick Wheeler.
I won't say anything about you here, Donald.
This award is given to Rick Wheeler in appreciation for your 25 years of dedicated service to the City of Scottsboro. Congratulations.
Dolly Parton's Imagination Library Request. Ms. Barkley.
Hi, my name is Debbie Barkley and I'm trying to pitch a program. So thank you for letting me come and talk to you all night and thank you for your community volunteers and all that. Um, I'm trying to introduce a program into Jackson County, but I'm here tonight to talk to you about Scottsboro specifically. Um, and just like to give you something to think about. Did you know that the brain architecture for reading develops rapidly during infancy and that early language experiences are critical to building this brain development? If you wait till kindergarten, we are playing catch-up and maybe too late. It would truly be wonderful if we could take advantage of the rapid brain development from birth to five years. And we tend to not focus on that and start talking about schooling to kids. So I'd like for you to focus on just birth to five years. And the program that I'm talking about, Dolly Parton's Imagination Library, and she has done this for years, started in Tennessee, obviously, but has gone all across the country. And I think some of it's in your folder there. And if you're in Tennessee, it's birth, but if you're elsewhere, you have to pay for the bulk rate for the book. So what she does is she mails out one book per month, so 12 in a year, and a library of 60 by the time you turn them. And they're quality books. Everybody, the first one that goes down is a blue engine that fits. Everybody knows about that one. But they're age-appropriate, great quality, and at this point, a child could go to a 60-book library, just like every kid and everybody else. I think the opportunity for interaction between child and parent, oral language, conversation, vocabulary, word association, and just become friends with books. This happens with, um, this program happens without parents having to go to the library, without parents having to choose, make a decision of what they buy, if they buy books or if they buy something that's essential to their household. Now, you're following there. I'm giving you the numbers for Scottsboro. The Dolly Parton Library of Jackson County is under the umbrella of Impact Learning because the radar are 501(c)(3) and you are required to be a part of an organization like that to be affiliated with the Dolly Parton Library. We are looking for sustainability. I don't think it would be responsible if we didn't have some sort of sustainability for kids for the whole program. And you can start the program at age four and get them 12 books if they've done it right. So it doesn't matter if you don't get them at birth, you can catch, you know, you can get it till the five. We of course appreciate any support you can give us, but I am looking for sustainability. A dream of mine would be, it would be a line I want to run, but, um, now, Scottsboro, Scottsboro has 800, excuse me, 820 children that would follow in this category from zero to five. With 100% participation, it's a $1,722 monthly bill for the $2.10 that it would cost. Now, um, a year would be $20,664. So if I get down on one knee and beg without help, but I'm trying to do this for the whole county, but again, I'd like to consider what things for Scottsboro in that area. We are outreach to corporate, lots of places, but you're my first stop. So again, I, do you have any questions for me? That would be my thing.
Anyone have any questions?
It's a pretty cool thing. A lot of people, she's giving out more than 2 million books, so it's a proven, proven program. There's no dis溄s or buts about it. They are easy, we register the kids, get it online, and they take care of the books and the mailing of the books. So it's a no-brainer if you have to, you just gotta get out of fundraising a little bit. So I'm not exactly sure how this works, so I'm asking for the whole enchilada and just appreciate your consideration.
Okay. Anyone have any questions?
I do. So how, is it possible for a family just to volunteer to get into this program without, where you have to have a phased program?
I mean, one, it's so big, I don't know how you can volunteer to do it. So it's a, they have a strict way to do my things and they have support throughout the whole process, but that's not, that's not an option. But that won't pay enough, so they don't need it all. Nobody's, we want to raise the money, so they're just getting the books for it.
So with this program, anybody who wanted to donate would need to talk to Impact Learning Center to help.
We'll take their donation.
Yes.
I've got a bank account set up.
All right.
So I would love to take whatever donation anybody personally wants to do.
Yes. Well, I'll make sure I got that out there for you.
My question, though, is without your program and just a family getting online to order some books, could they do it that way?
Um, you know, I haven't checked into whether or not we can do that individually.
Not at that price, for sure.
You can. I would think that you can. You have to have, you have to have.
You have to have the organization.
You have to be part of the 501(c)(3), which is the, you know, the thing that Impact is. So that's why we're, and they've been extremely out on the job on that Impact has lots of programs to help. We're just looking at a group that truly has not gotten a lot of focus. And unfortunately, that's when your brain just busts out and just think about it. They get their friends' books, their parents have the opportunity to talk back and forth to them, they're seeing them go from left to right for reading, they associate with words and pictures. It is incredible what can be developed. And literacy is a huge thing that we talk about here in this county and we have a lot of have-nots and that's God's opportunity for. So I am wishing and hoping that this thing gets kicked off and we can really start getting books in kids' hands a little earlier.
So this, this $20,600, that includes all of your corporate sponsors and anybody that wanted to donate, plus whatever money you could get out of us?
The county-wise, there's 2,700 kids, I mean, $70,000 for that. Scottsboro has 820 and we can quickly do that, but 820 with 100% participation is $1,722 a month and the whole year is $20,664.
Including money you can get from corporate, personal?
Yeah, I'm, I'm gonna go to each municipality, Bridgeport, as I recommended. So I'm hoping to get that for it too, plus corporate and individuals and, you know, foundations and, I mean, I'm writing all the self-dicting grants and stuff, I hope. But having said that, I don't want to approach it like that. I want, I want to get as much money as I can, $70,000 for that, and I want to do it for the whole county. So I want to be helping with Scottsboro. So if you can.
Remember, Ms. Barkley, Scottsboro's a part of the county.
Well, it is a part of the county, but if you can take care of your grades, then you can go local and take it. And so it's not as big an enchilada. So if I came in here and asked you for $70,000, you probably don't want it. So if you break it down, it's just like, you know, how do you eat an elephant from body at a time? So if you can get it little, little bites at a time, and I'll take it every month, I'll take it every year, I'll come back, I mean, whatever it takes. I really think this is a great program, this is a proven program, and it puts books, hardcore books, and you do have to, we're not going to be a program that you're gonna fill up hotels and bring people into restaurants and that kind of thing. You have to look forward, you know, invest in it now and get the, break the benefits, kids staying in school and feeling accomplished and the literacy rate goes up. So I think looking forward, it will pay off, but you have to have that fully kind of look at it. But I hope I can do that some.
Anyone else have any questions about the program? If not, we're gonna move this to the 26th meeting to give enough time to look at it.
Thank you all for your service, too.
Thank you. Number four, public hearing agreement with High Country Toyota. This is the time and place for the public hearing. Is anyone here for this? Thank you. Anyone here against this? No one here against this. So anybody up here have any questions about the, in your package? Just want to go over it one time. Now, we've gone over this three or four times? No questions? All right, then we'll move that to tonight's meeting. That'll be number two on the meeting tonight. That will conclude the public hearing. Number five, discuss the request to proceed with public hearing for rezoning at 1290 Porter Road. Mr. Clark.
I took off, grabbed me out of him tonight. So I've reached out to Billy Smith, Smith is the mayor in council. Got some drawings. More calculations. This is the same draw I wanted to blow up a little bit. I'll come back.
Okay.
Thank you, sir.
Here's, here's, oh, Peter, this blew up a little bit, it's showing. So, uh, let me check that up. So if you look, I was involved, I didn't own that place down there when, uh, when they repaid Porter Road, but I'm not, I'm not sure what all the play. But on my drawing, I got mine marked up a little bit from y'all. That water's coming off that mountain under, it's got double 48-inch pipe. See if I can tell that?
No, I don't.
So it's coming off that mountain right there, it's a double 48 pipe. Double 48, I saw, that's where all the water's coming from. See it, Gary?
Yeah.
See it, Bud?
Yeah.
This is the mountain over here, it's coming underneath here, going down here behind his house. So the reason that we didn't have any complaints to begin with from those homeowners, is they were already dealing with the water. So this water is coming off the hill, it's going, it's not even going across my property or my neighbor's property. It's going in that ditch and in that ditch, and it's dumping it, and it's behind those houses. It was already going in there. It wasn't, we hadn't changed anything. So if you look at the great plan now, the, uh, so Mr. Irvin owns this, owns this lot right here. All this water is going to sheet graining across, you look those counters in that bigger one, the bigger draw in the ceiling, but it's sheet graining across here, going in. And what the engineers, what he recommended is digging the retention pond down there in that corner. You sit at retention pond, you put a retention pond in there, you put an out-of-control structure in it, so that pond's gonna fill up to two or three feet, then it's gonna spill over. It's on a 1.5% fall coming out of that pipe. It's an out-of-control structure on the inside of the pond, 45 linear feet at 18-inch. We're not blowing that other draw up, you can't see the, see those numbers, you see the lettering down there, you can't see it, but if you look on that, it shows you, uh, 45 linear feet at 18-inch, five to five, and it's gonna spill out into, where it always has into the DOT right away. So, uh, this is what he came up with, this is, this is based on a 100-year flood plan, flood plan, excuse me, flood, it's a 100-year flood plan, flood plan, if I get it right. So, uh, there is, but that water has always been going into those, behind those houses. It's like that at the previous meeting, I asked Mr. Wayne Moore, have we had any complaints? Until we, until all this started, have we had any complaints about water? And he said no. And so I think that sums it up, that that water's always been going there. Basically, the volume of water's been going there since we redid, you guys redid Porter Road. So.
Before we go any further, I understand and I appreciate you bringing all that, but I think this would be more for the public hearing type thing. Right now, I guess you need to ask what you want it rezoned to.
C4.
Okay. He, he's asking to change from R1 to C4 on this. Now, we're, we're starting from the beginning again, since we.
It's gotta be redone.
We've gotta start.
Go to our planning commission again.
Well, we're gonna have to do a public hearing and all. We don't have to go back to the planning, but we'll have to vote whether to have a public hearing and then open it up again.
Uh, Mr. President, with the application that he's got with the planning commission, it don't have his name on it. Is that something that'd have to be corrected or does it matter?
Well, I don't think so. Josh, you want to go over that? He owns the land.
It was from Mr. Freeman.
Mr. Freeman was wanting to purchase it at that time, yeah.
Okay, I just didn't.
I'm starting with the Bob President.
But this has been through the planning already?
So this, this detention pond is something that you're adding now.
It's used by the rezoning.
I've talked to four of the residents that's over there, you know what I'm talking about, and they would all agree that they have had water there, water problems, but they were just real afraid that they were gonna have more.
Yeah, with this 100-year flood plan, uh, this retention pond has got enough volume in it in place of 100-year flood. I mean, it's gonna control the water going out. So I mean, it's a, it's a concrete box with wire in it, it's gonna dictate how much water can actually go out into the DOT right away at some given time. And they're gonna have to bless that too. This ain't something I can just go in there and do without going to jail for that.
Yeah.
So they're very strict.
Okay. So anyone have any questions as far as the rezoning?
So we're just, the vote or the discussion tonight is whether or not to go forward with the public hearing.
Well, we would have, this is just a work session. We'd have to do that at a meeting.
Right.
And so.
Another public hearing?
You have to have another public hearing now.
And then after 15 days?
Uh-huh, and then it'll be a vote after 15 days. But tonight, we're just talking about what he wants.
I didn't mean, I didn't, I was at that point, I know we're going back, but I thought we were.
Yeah, yeah.
That's my call, I didn't.
Yeah. So he's asking to rezone from R1 to C4.
Yep.
So anyone have any questions on, on that part?
Would y'all want anything further from me, providing?
What's the red line over here? Is that something added?
That's the pipe.
From the detention one?
So no, this is, uh, this is my property right here. This is the kidney diaphragm, this is fascinol, this is kidney diaphragm, this is that city road coming up through here. I got a drive going through here.
Yeah.
I can't see that, but it says something, it's 18-inch or 24-inch, 24-inch pipe going underneath that road, underneath that drive right there.
So would it take out any of this water or just this?
No, all this water's going this way.
Okay.
It's just a drive, it's just a temporary drive built in there now from 72.
Okay.
It's supposed to be a city road, right, Josh? It's not a city road? So that's, that's fascinol and kidney diaphragm, so I guess that's the reason they didn't post a lot of, pull up. I didn't know, I thought that was true. You working on it, Josh?
Anyone else having questions about the rezoning? We're gonna put this on the 26th. That'd be a vote whether or not to have a public hearing or not.
I'll vote September 26th.
No, September 26th. Yeah, two weeks, two weeks. So we'll vote and then we'll host public hearing afterwards if it's voted.
Y'all, y'all not asking for anything else? Any documentation? I can get them established, I made the, I can bring drawings, I can put it on PowerPoint, whatever you guys need.
What, like I say, when we get to the public hearing, if we're having one, anything you want to bring, I'm welcome to put it up there for you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
This is the way.
So we'll move this to the 26th to vote whether or not to go to a public hearing. All right. Number six, discuss tourism grant application for the Scottsboro Barbecue Festival. Mr. Miller?
I'm asking the mayor and people, I can't ask him, I'm talking to Ray T. So the Scottsboro Barbecue Festival is asking for, and, uh, donation from the tourism grant development for the purpose for this year's barbecue festival on Long Island Gate. Attached in the packet coming to you, there's a, I'll give you the flyer, the M L, kind of shows what the festival is, so we'd like to be there. This is our seventh year at the festival. The second attachment is a map that will show what will be closed on the streets. I've already spoken with the chief and doctor as part of what streets can be closed, you see the gray line on the streets that are highlighted. We'll have all four sides of the square will be closed. They'll actually be barricaded at Apple Tree, Ham, Broad Street, down here on the center of City Hall. The street behind City Hall, which is Caldwell, brought things to City Hall, P Street will be closed at the car show. And then we'll also have Andrews closed between Laurel Street and P Street. So it's highlighted, I don't know where it is, I know it's also highlighted. We're adding contestants, we're adding vendors, I think we're up to a little over 130 vendors this year, which is about 30 to 40 more than we had last year. We're expecting approximately 40 good teams. I think we're at a little over 30 signature teams right now. Still have a month to go to get those team gestures. So that's the reason why we're asking, we asked to plug Andrews Street, so we can put additional good teams down that street. We've had a lot of expenses this year. Do you have a copy of that, or how do you print it off the application?
Yes, we got it.
It's over here.
All right, so on the application, you can see on the second page, the budget, these expenses are a little bit more than when I prepared this a couple of weeks ago, but it's almost a $40,000 effort this year for the festival. It's a large number because we have an additional repurchase of barricades this year with Main Street, departmental with Main Street. Spent about $3,800 on barricades, that was our half, Main Street paid the other half for that. This is five 15-feet of galvanized barricades, they're real nice, city duty, Albertson and yellow barricades that we can use, but also Main Street, the city can use those, the city can use those. So that was one expense for the end for this year. We also spent a little more than $5,000 on signage, I'm explaining why, just a moment. Also, a little more than $2,000 extra this year on about 50 courts. After sending out some messages to some of the contestants and some of the vendors and some of the participants, visitors, we wanted to know how we can improve this year's festival. One was more restrooms, we only had about 15, so how we got 50 is almost 50. The other thing was parking. No one did rear park, they were parking illegally in a lot of different places, different private lots around square. So we've identified the, the third page is attached, is a map for a shuttle route. So we're actually going to bring in three shuttles this year. One is going to be provided on Front Page, they will shuttle people from Long Forest Square to Front Page and back. One will go down Broad Street, which starts at Patches and comes up to Athens and the square. One will go down Scott Street for Caldwell, Purgeum, and the power of the D C main. And so what? And so, we have three different shuttle routes that people can actually, we're going to advertise this on the website, social media. Hopefully get the word out to people, park in one of these lots, take the free shuttle to the festival and go around the show. That's why we have the additional five thousand dollars in signage. Hopefully, well, the five thousand dollars in signage without the signage. Uh, it's also a frame signage that, it's the very large, tall, plasticated frame signage that can be moved from place to place. Uh, Main Street also in, in all that signage with us, so they have access to that signage for events around the entire year. We're trying to do this in, with them, so that they could use what we have and vice versa. So, hopefully make sure we don't have that expense this, this two, that's almost ten thousand dollars for order, ten thousand dollars for that out here. And ideally, we'll save some money in our eighth and ninth year and then blow it out for our tenth year. But for now, this is fully requesting, you've got the budget information, uh, all that, and such is going on. Uh, one different change this year for the festival is that the Empire Square will be your garden. That's why we have to get very, uh, the barricades necessary for the A B C preparations to, to wait and contain the Empire Square. So, that's why we have to purchase those. So, all, no other questions? Do you have a share?
Department about barricading the south side?
I have, and we are going to, they're gonna feed in through, look on the map, the southeast, southeast corner, the blue line. That's where they will enter. There will be a sign up, so far as only, so they'll let them, they can enter the barricade. They don't have to get out of vehicle. They'll go in, park in the basement or burn spaces across the basement entrance, and then they'll turn around back after that somewhere.
I know, they complained in the past about.
They, they have. They, they complained about, you know, how do they get in and out without having to get out of vehicle? So, uh, even if the Empire Square is the big one, they also have to man off the entrances. So, we'll have some one areas in case they can't get out of there. But, talk to them, Jeff, we're, we're fine.
Okay.
And I've also, Ms. Jean, so he has a copy of this from the fire department, and then, definitely.
Anyone else having questions on this? No other questions, so we're gonna move that till tonight. Thank you, since it's a, a time thing. That one's coming up quick. All right, number seven, discuss the resolution for a one-time holiday for employees. I can kinda go over this, uh. This is the Columbus Day holiday next month. Uh, we've done this at the last three years. And it's, we kinda do it year to year, seeing how the city's doing financially. And so, anyone have any questions or comments about the Columbus Day holiday? Questions, we'll move that to tonight's meeting also. Number eight, discuss the resolution to award bids for tennis court resurfacing. Ms. Phillips, can you go over that?
The rec department is in need of resurfacing the tennis courts. We posted one bid, mailed six bids, and received one bid. Lower Brothers came in at forty-eight thousand eight hundred. And it's recommended that the bid be awarded to Lower Brothers as the only responsible bidder that met specifications.
Okay. Thank you. Any questions on the bid on the tennis court resurfacing?
Is this money already, uh, budgeted or?
Mr. Wood, will you go over that? Okay.
There was, um, last budget year, thirty-six thousand was budgeted for it. I've spoken with him, he's gonna try to see if there's a way, because if we only have one bid, we're allowed to negotiate down a little bit.
Yeah.
Um, two options we have, um, if we do a little bit of prep work beforehand, it would save at least a thousand dollars, maybe close to two. When it comes to if we, uh, pressure wash the work before they can just start doing the technical work. Uh, the other option is, he put a hundred and eighty days on there, which would put us in next spring. He said they may can push some things around and do it this fall. So, that would, you know, speed up the project a little bit. So, those are a couple of options. He was supposed to give back to me the first time, but, uh, it may be a couple more days. So, I can guarantee that we're trying to get that down a little bit more.
Appreciate that. Mr. Miller, money's there already?
I don't think he spent all the money that was allocated, so, if it was ever, uh, made clear.
Okay. Anyone else having questions on that? If not, we'll move that to tonight's meeting also. Number nine, discuss the resolution to award bids for Fire Station Three Patio Project. Chief next.
Yes, it's actually two bids, it's probably was allocated sometime back in, uh, proportion of what we did at Fire Out Three, with remodeling and stuff. And this is a continuation of that, which has been slow because of, some want the economy, some of them don't wanna commit too far in the math because of the way the market construction go. This is two bids, uh, one for a concrete pad and the other for the, the twerter shed, a pinch of the roof structure, it's stringing around a patio there on the side of three. On the concrete, we mailed nine, received one. You can see for two thousand and seventy-five dollars on the, uh, covered roof structure, we mailed seven, received one for sixty-nine hundred dollars. All of those went through the, seventy-five.
All right. Anyone have any questions on that? No questions, we'll go ahead and move that to tonight's meeting also. Number ten, discuss the resolution surplus solid waste property. Mr. Level?
This, um, the resolution wouldn't matter, so, we got fifty to pick up until the roll-off. Have two fifty's in the, in the program. And then do the two roll-offs and then the, the program.
Okay.
How would it come out on the, uh, roll-off?
Uh, it was a preset amount, one of the purchases. And I don't know exactly what it was, you knew it was, I think it was, I think it was something, you know, it was pre-set.
Yeah, I remember now, but I just couldn't remember the number.
Anyone else having questions on these? No more questions, we'll move that to tonight's meeting also. And then, number eleven, discuss equipment purchase for solid waste department.
Um, these two pieces are on the recycle program. Solid waste, the program, the separate, this is about cardboard funds, where we sold cardboard and, and, uh, marketable items. So, these two parts are the, the.
This is the, the mini loader for the recycle, and also the container mover for the roll-offs at the baler. And this has come out of the, the overage in the recycling money with the sale of cardboard. So, anyone have any questions on that? No, we'll go ahead and move that to tonight's meeting too. Thank you. Number twelve. Discuss the resolution for Airport Improvement Project Funding Agreement. Mayor, can you go over that?
Oh, yes, this is authorizing improvements, uh, property acquisition, uh, fencing reimbursement, and runway seal coat that we've discussed in the past. The city's portion is thirty-two thousand seven hundred fifty dollars, and I think we've got forty-five thousand dollars in ARPA money that, uh, is available to cover this.
Okay. Anyone else having questions? Anyone having questions on this? No questions, we'll move that to tonight's meeting also. That will conclude the meeting. Uh, we'll save delegation reports till after the council meeting. We, we'll be back in about five minutes, let me get this all rolled up. And we're, we're adjourned from the work session. All right. Okay, I'm gonna make sure I get this right.
Tourism, High Country.
Tourism.
Tourism.
Four.
One holiday.
Tennis court resurfacing.
Tennis court.
What do you think about that, Gary?
For retention pond.
Bailey?
Well, it's, we can do it.
Okay. Do you want me to put that in there when I say it?
Josh, about if you want it, I, I don't know.
Shouldn't be if I did.
I would hate. Yeah, I think we'll keep it out.
Circle solid waste.
Probably is higher than theirs.
Oh, yeah, you go by there. When you go down there and there you are and look at it, it looks like it's three feet high.
Yeah, around nine things on the meeting.
Sure does.
Twelve on the work session, nine on the meeting. Good night.
We authorize him to negotiate. Opposed to approving the bid.
Okay. Well, let me start then.
Yeah. I might will be. They'll end up breaking.
I understand. It's over.
Let me get him up there.
Mr. Wood?
Mr. Wood.
Come down? Okay. Then, because what we'll have to do is reject the bid and authorize you to negotiate lower price then. Okay. Yeah, they come down with this. Okay.
Because of the part he wasn't thinking about.
Okay. Just wanna make sure we did this right.
Yeah, thirty-eight, so it's out of thirty-six.
What was thirty-six?
Thirty-six.
He said part of it was the cost of materials, which everybody says that, because there were a few more holes than he, remember Jane out there when he looked at it last year.
You remember the ten years?
Ten years.
So, we play close at the.
Yes.
And it's only for the gain above what.
You take the average year where they started the process. That's the number that comes off. It's like it's only for overage over that amount.
So, we're gonna vote to go to public hearing on twenty-sixth, and we'll do the public hearing on the, that's next. I mean, we're about to go to public hearing, you got like fifteen days. Yep, yeah, after fifteen days. Which will be the second meeting, it'll be the meeting, so we're slowing up, because maybe twenty-sixth.
We're gonna go, okay.
We vote on the twenty-sixth.
You gotta wait seven days.
Oh, well, we won't have a Columbus Day. We can have the public hearing on seventeen, that work session. That's Columbus Day anyway.
Okay. Okay.
So, why are you?
Uh, we'll have to do it on twenty, twenty-fourth.
No, after the public hearing, you gotta go seven day notice for the public hearing.
Well, then, kind of.
Have a public hearing, then, wait fifteen days.
After we vote to have the public hearing, how many days I gotta wait?
Seven.
Just seven?
Seven.
You gotta go seven day notice before.
Public hearing. Then after the public hearing.
So, we can have a public hearing on the third.
Okay. Vote. Vote on the third.
Or vote on twenty-sixth, well, I have a public.
I've gotta run the public hearing.
Okay, I guess. So, did I give you enough time?
We gotta vote Monday night, so I can't send the committee to choose that.
Okay, so, it's hard enough for somebody that's.
Seventeen.
Yeah, they win that.
Oh, well, yeah, moving to.
Tonight.
And then, fourteen for about seventeen, October.
Yes.
Seventeen October. So, we should.
I agree, means that we're ready to get them.
Okay.
All right. Y'all ready?
Yeah.
All right, well, I gotta make sure, motion, second, vote, discussion on tonight's. All right. Agenda for you vote on it. We'll call this council meeting Monday, September twelfth, to order. We'll dispense with formalities. Ms. Phillips, will you do the roll call?
Mr. Dahl?
Here.
Ms. Tolliver?
Here.
Mr. Ashburn?
Here.
Mr. Stewart?
Here.
Mr. Bailey?
Here.
Before we adopt the agenda, I'll go over it. Number one, consider the resolution for C D S Scottsboro Vehicle Management Program. Number two, be considered the resolution in seven seventy-two agreement with High Country Toyota. Number three, tourism grant barbecue festival. Number four, the one-time holiday Columbus Day. Number five, the bid for the tennis courts. Number six, award the bids for Fire Station Three Patio Project. Number seven, surplus solid waste property. Number eight, equipment purchases for solid waste. And number nine, the resolution for the Airport Improvement Project Funding. So, agenda, do I have a motion to approve it?
I'll make that motion.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion on that? Hearing none will vote, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Agenda's adopted. Number three, approval of previous minutes, and that's August twenty-second and August twenty-ninth. Do I have a motion to approve those?
I make that motion.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion on the minutes? Hearing none will vote, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Minutes are approved. Number one, consider the resolution for the C D S Scottsboro Vehicle Management Program. I have a motion to approve this program.
I'll make that motion.
Do I have a second?
I second.
Any discussion on the vehicle management program? Hearing none will vote, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Number two, consider the resolution in seven seventy-two agreement with High Country Toyota. Do I have a motion to approve this?
I make that motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion on it?
Mr. President, just for information.
Yes.
If, um, if they close the ne, their old outlet, that makes the contract void.
It would create a clawback situation where there would be litigation. And, uh, my recommendation would be we not pay one cent if they did not keep every requirement under the agreement.
And the other thing, the, the money paid from seven seventy-two would just be on the gain above what they're doing at their current location.
Uh, it's the gain above their current location tax, starting at the time the negotiation started on the seven seventy-two.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions on it? If not, we'll vote, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Number three, tourism grant application for the Scottsboro BBQ Festival. They've asked for ten thousand dollars out of the tourism grant. I open the floor for a motion.
I make the motion.
A motion to, for the ten thousand dollars, do I have a second?
I second.
Any discussion on that? Hearing none will vote, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Number four, the resolution for a one-time holiday for employees, and that's Columbus Day this year. Have a motion to approve that?
I make that motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion on that? Hearing none will vote. Hearing none will vote, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. And the tennis courts, so after discussing this, this would be a motion to reject the bid on the tennis courts and authorize Mr. Wood to negotiate a lower price. So do I have a motion to reject the bid and authorize him to negotiate a lower price?
I make that motion.
Okay, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion on that? Hearing none will vote, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Number six, resolution to award bids to Fire Station Three Patio Project. This is the concrete bid and the shed bid, after confirming that both of these have a business license. So do I have a motion to approve that?
I make that motion.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion on that? Hearing none will vote, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Number seven, the resolution to surplus solid waste property. I have a motion to approve this.
I make the motion.
Do I have a second? Any discussion on that? In discussion, I just wanted to remind that the, the one truck is in the, the vehicle management program, the other two are in the garbage buyback program. So, just want to remind you of that. Any other discussion on that? Hearing none will vote, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And number nine, the resolution for Airport Improvement Project Funding. This is an amount of thirty-two thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars, but it will be paid out of the forty-five thousand dollar grant that was already received. So do I have a motion to approve this?
I make that motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion on that? Hearing none will vote, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. That'll conclude the meeting, so we'll go to delegations. Mr. Wallingsford?
Mr. President, I have two matters, and I promised to say other about five minutes, but if you would let me know halfway throughout. I had the community table with Mr. Kenner, I've got an opportunity that I've been working on over, over a year, this property lease. We've got engineering drawings, site approved, we've got contracts in place, and now our municipality has come up with some type of franchise agreement that we have to have. This is the third site in the state of Alabama, one in Opa-locka. Mr. Kenner, I can't remember where they responded that the other, the other site was. This has not been a requirement in any, any other municipality in the state of Alabama. I'm certainly not an expert on the, on the details, but I would like to request some clarification. My concern, quite frankly, is a couple of things. One is, why do we have requirements that other municipalities are not, are not putting? So why are we, you know, placing a burden on, on contractors that are trying to come to our area? This seems to be a mentality that we, we've had over the last several years. This is not my first rodeo, not the first interaction that I've had with this type of situation, and I keep, the response I keep getting is, well, give me an example, give me an example. And, you know, my question is, how many examples do we, do we need? My effort is to make us easier to deal with. If I were not local, it would be too easy for this opportunity to move three miles down the road and, and not, and not locate within, within our municipality. Also, as I pointed out to Mr. Bailey, the long-term financial implication to me personally is not insignificant. And where do I spend my disposable income? So it, you know, it's, it's, you know, a blow not only for the progress of our, of our communication capabilities here, but also the, the financial implications of, of our local economy. So I'd like for you to take that into consideration. I really, it is my true desire that we as a municipality become easier to do business with, and that we're not finding reasons to turn people away, because it's too competitive a market for us to continue passing up opportunities. So I just want all the council to be, to be aware, and this is not an individual circumstance. This is something that I believe happens on a regular basis, and is putting a leash and a collar on our, on our progress. To shift to my second topic, it's also my honor to serve as economic vitality, vitality chair for our downtown district. So I've been out the last few weeks, meeting new business owners downtown, and I just ran into a situation over the weekend that I found somewhat concerning, that they have an entrance to their business that is ground level. And I, I asked, since I'm both at Cripple now, I asked why they didn't have the front, at least two parking spaces designated as, as handicap? And they said that the city would not allow that, that it was, they don't actually own the park, and the city of Scottsboro does. It's five feet from their front door, and we want to require them to build a access ramp and entrance in the back of the building, rather than allow them to have handicap designation at the front door. And I find, I find that hard to, hard to believe. But again, sometimes I think that common sense has, you know, has left the building as far as some of our decisions and calls that we made. So again, I would, I would ask that we consider situations like that as we are attempting to revitalize some of these older historic buildings. There's a lot more gray area than there is black and white. And, you know, I think again, the mentality is limbing our growth and process of progress by, by placing undue requirements on these small business owners, and we're just not being very understanding and deducing to their, to their progress. That was enlightening for the.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
As to Mr. Wallingsford's concerns, the two towns that the satellite company had dealt with so far were Oxford and Talladega.
Yes.
We received that in an email from Mr. Wallingsford on Wednesday, and I've been in the process since that time in checking up on them. The problem I've had is, when this was described to me, it was described as a satellite company putting a place where they would collect data and send the data out, sometimes selling to local entities, as opposed to entities that fall under the Federal Telecommunications Act. If they are selling under the Telecommunications Act, there is no franchise and there is no business license. If they are selling locally, it's like a cable company coming in and having one customer, two customers, three customers, what's economics?
That's the case, but I will verify.
Okay, then they have to have a franchise, whether it's one customer or ten thousand customers.
I think that's where the jurisdiction is. And Mr. Kenner, again, as much as I'm very interested in this situation, again, my concern is overall, as to instead of let me, let me clarify and make sure is, I'm sorry, you're gonna have to have this agreement. And again, if, if, if I were not more knowledgeable about the local requirements, I would never come, and it wouldn't be a question, I would just take the know and go away. And I believe with all my heart, that, that is happening a bulk of the time. I think we are, we are being in situations where we are misinterpreting the requirement. And instead of clarifying on our end, we're placing what we believe to be the case on the customer, and they go somewhere.
Yes, but to clarify what this agent of the city has been doing, I've attempted to call their lawyer twice, he's attempted to call me back three times.
Obviously.
We still have not connected. It is my impression, if they are selling to, like a cable company would sell, then they have to have a franchise.
And I will verify that.
If they do not, then they do not have to have a franchise. All they would have to do in that situation is have a business license, just like the people that are putting in the patio.
I believe that's the situation we're in, but again, I could be mistaken, and I want to, I want to verify.
But if you can get that confirmed through their person, and have him send me an email?
I will do that.
Thank you.
Thank you all. Noel, delegation removed the reports. Mayor?
A couple of things, I want to thank Wayne and Street Department, I don't know who's noticed, but if you've been through the city park lately, and if you've been through the interchange down here at Seventy-Two and Broad, the Street Department has actually trimmed the shoreline around the city park and around the, the fingers there under the, under the bridge, it looks, looks much better, Wayne, thank you very much. Also hope to have the West Frontage Road reopen tomorrow, I think, is the plan, where the, where they've patched those dips that have been such an issue. So hopefully they'll have that frontage road reopen tomorrow. That's all I've got tonight.
That's great news, thanks. Mr. Dahl?
I don't have anything, thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Tolliver?
I don't have anything, thank you for coming.
Thank you. Mr. Ashburn?
I don't have anything, thanks a lot.
Mr. Stewart?
I don't have anything, thank you all for coming.
Thank you. Just a reminder, we do have a budget here in conclusion of this meeting, and I'll go ahead and announce, if we don't finish up tonight, we'll meet tomorrow at five o'clock. But I'm hoping to finish up tonight. But I want to go ahead and announce that now, that we will meet at five o'clock tomorrow, depending on how tonight goes. So, work session on the nineteenth, meeting on the twenty-sixth, so. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn?
I make that motion.
Do I have a second?
I second.
Any discussion? Will vote, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Or adjourned?